I'd like to call to order the school district meeting, Penn Trafford School Board meeting of August 11th at 7:04. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance, certified of the United States of America and to the God who fulfills his name, one nation under God, indivisible, with originality and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Lego, we have a roll call, please.
Miss you may, Madam President. Miss Disson.
Here.
Mr. Kachasek is out of town. Dr. Koschko is out of town. Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Neenick.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
And Dr. Trey is also out of town. We do have a call, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 19th, 2014?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Leonard, second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. All right, I'm turning over to Dr. Harris for information.
Thank you very much. After last week's hour-long information meeting I already presented, we only have one person that's going to do a quick presentation, is our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Scott Engleis.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. We talked a little about this last week, it's on-hand schools. On-hand schools is a software, piece of software that essentially takes all of our data and houses it in one spot. And what this will help us do is really help us form data teams and analyze data so that we can really drill down and look at what the issues are, where the deficiencies, and make adjustments to instruction to address those deficiencies. So, it does a lot of different things, and I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it, I'm not going to claim to be an expert on it. We had a one-hour presentation, we haven't had our formal training on it. You know, obviously, we're asking for your approval this week, but I'm going to show you a little bit of what it can do. This is the, I don't know if you can see, I know it's still a bit small, but this is the homepage, and as an example, this is the dashboard, they call it, and you have a bunch of widgets on here which essentially show you some of the data pieces. As an example, here's the Algebra I widget, and that yellow area right there is a key area that we need to know about, that's the students who we refer to as bubble kids. So, you know, there's 40, this is fictitious data, so this is just a dummy data system that we have right now. But if you click on this 40 percent, it will get you all of the kids who are in that area, because those are your basic kids, kids who we think that we can move into the proficient area. So, automatically, with one click, you can see all the kids who are right on the bubble. It gives you the ability to really address those kids and see what their issues are. So, if you click on this kid right here, Kathy Anderson, you can see what it does. And this is a very powerful tool right here, is this young lady, you can see all the data that she has ever accumulated over the course of her, you know, 10, 12 years of schooling, whatever grade she's in. You can see that there's data from the PSAs, from sixth grade, seventh grade, you have fifth grade, there's DIBELS data, there's SAT scores, there's local assessments, foresight assessments, all of the different data pieces are all right there. So, teachers have access to this, the data teams, the PLC groups, the grade-level teachers that are meeting can really look at these kids and see what the issues are. So, just an example, if you want to see how this young lady did in sixth grade on the foresight benchmark, you click on it, and you can see where she's at, what the issues are, you can see where the deficiencies are. You see over here, there's a negative 20, so she has issues with critical reading. So, you can really drill down and see what the problems are and formulate a plan. And it kind of goes into, you know, our mass customized learning, we're trying to develop plans for every kid so that we can really address their needs. So, that's one piece that it does. If you go back up to the dashboard, again, there's more pieces, there's the PSA. Over here, you have something that's called, these are our at-risk kids. So, there's a formula to take a look at all the discipline issues, test scores, grades, attendance, all the different things that a kid accumulates over time, and identify some at-risk kids. These are probably kids who you might want to consider or worry about possibly at risk of not graduating. So, as a high school principal, guidance counselor, you're going to want to look at these kids and see what the issues are, and see what you can do, develop a plan to make sure that they're on track to graduate. So, again, you click on those kids, and you can see exactly where their issues are, what the deficiencies, what kind of discipline things they've been in. This pulls all the data that we have, whether it be DIBELS, SAT, the Power School data, it puts it all in one place, it makes it easy for us to look at and extract it, and really analyze things. Another feature here, as I talked a little about, discipline. Here's an example of the discipline happening in a school. Maybe Dr. Harris and I have to do a report on bullying, harassment, we have to do a Safe Schools Report. Well, I can click right here, boom, and I know how many bullying, harassment cases we had in particular billing or in schools, we know exactly what we have there. Very powerful tool for principals to look at those issues. You can also see the number of suspensions, in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions. Over here, we have attendance graph, so it pulls all the attendance right out of Power School, puts it in there, you can see what kind of attendance you have from one month and next. You know, you might have the winter months where you have high attendance issues because of some of the weather issues, or, you know, maybe there's an issue with senior skip day, and you want to see what you had on a particular day in May where senior skip day, if you click on it, and you're able to see what kind of kids, what kind of data you had for the month of May. So, it's all sitting right there for you. So, that's just another feature of the attendance piece that you have. The other thing that it will do for us that we really like, the principals were really excited about when they saw the presentation, there's a curriculum package, and there's not much I can see on the demo package, but you're able to write your own curriculum and dump it in here, so the teachers have access to that, right, you know, as opposed to going to a binder or going somewhere else to find it. The curriculum can be written and placed right in there, and it's correlated standards, it all sits right there, it shows you the benchmarks and the standards that are there for the kids, so it's all right there. You can also, there's a lesson planner piece, and right now, we're not really happy with our lesson planner piece that we have right now, so this might be able to help us with that. You click on it, you can see the week there, and all the lesson plans that can be in there, you can export it through a PDF, and put it on the website, or however how we want to put that out there for the parents and kids. There's also a nice feature, it's an SLO package that's coming out, and as you know, SLOs are coming for the new teacher evaluation system, so this is another form that can help us create those and develop them, so that's something we look forward to looking at and see if that can help us. There's so many different reports and different features that you can use, Mr. Carazia with RTI over there might want to use that area. You can develop your local assessments, some of our teachers, I know at the high school we created our own benchmark assessments in mathematics and language arts, so that we're able to look at data. So, you can create your own local assessments and put it in there, it houses all this data, and it's there for the teachers, for principals to use, to hopefully make improvements on instruction. So, that's kind of a little brief overview, it's not, you know, the full package, but that's it in a nutshell.
Does it give you all the data and your subgroups and everything, so you can?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, there's so many queries on here, you can sort it and divide it out into anything that you want.
And does Power School work with it?
In fact, yeah, that's a good question. They asked what our student information system was, and they said, we said Power School, that's great, because Power School is actually the number-one leader software in the country, so it worked very well with them.
So, we won't have a lot of double entry from the Power School system?
Shouldn't, no, it migrates, they do something where it kind of talks to each other every night and takes that data and pulls it.
What's the, how's that conversion take place? Is that part of their, is that part of, whoever the company's job to help us with that?
They asked for a meeting with Mr. Caruso to work that out. I don't know the technical side of that, but I know that he asked if we had our server locally, which seemed to be a good indicator, he said that's good, so we should be able to migrate this data very easily.
Okay. So, any of the double entries, really, things were already double entering into like a spreadsheet or something?
Right.
Or not having it in such a place?
Yeah, we get our data, we get it in spreadsheet, and it's, you know, a million cells left, a million cells down, and honestly, it's to the point where the principals and teachers, it's so much there, we don't know what to do with it all. Trying to figure it out and how to deal with it is very cumbersome, time-consuming, so if you're able to just simply dump it right into here, sort it, puts it in there, now you're able to click, 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 if you want IP students, or you want socioeconomic groups, you want fifth graders, third graders, boom, you grab it, and it's right there for you.
Maybe this is a little bit redundant, but as I gather this, it appears it's totally reliant on good data to give you?
Absolutely.
So, if this goes into play now, 2014-15, would it be retroactive back to student data that's been compiled to that point, or would it be moving forward, putting all new data in?
That's a good question. They are able to do whatever data we give them, they're able to put in there. So, we have data from our PSAs and Keystones from its inception, so it's just a matter of getting that information to them, and they'll be able to pull it. So, they're able to go back so far, I'm not sure where that data begins and ends, but I am quite confident we can get at least five to seven years' worth of good data in there. Am I right, Dr. Harris? We have a lot of this spreadsheet?
We have everything saved.
That's what I thought.
So, it sounds then like it wouldn't be real labor-intensive, that they have some compatible programs that would be able to go in and soak the data out of our programs and?
It should be seamless, and in fact, we've talked to some other administrators and other districts, they say it's very powerful, it's a great system, and it's highly recommended.
That was my next question. Other districts that have used this successfully?
Yeah, a lot of districts have used it, I know Norman has used it specifically, I've talked to some of the principals over there, and they're very happy with it.
Gateway used it, and our new principal, he's actually going to be doing the staff training, part of the staff training, because he's actually?
Tony speaks very highly of the new high school principal, he's at Gateway, and he's planning on working with the teachers at the end service on developing the program more.
And we believe this will help with one of our goals, we are trying to raise student growth. I know if you realize, in the Pittsburgh Post has said, they listed all the scores, and Penn Trafford is no longer on the top, and one of the categories with a student profile report was student growth, we took a big hit in that area all across the district. So, we actually want to use this to help us identify where students who need to grow and use it to help, you know, increase student achievement and also improve P-Voss scores, which in return improves our SPP scores, so.
Yeah, SPP is a new benchmark to evaluate schools, you're going to see that more often every year, what is the school's SPP or the district's SPP, and they're finally starting to release the district's SPPs. And one thing that we know that we need to work on is what Dr. Harris indicated, our growth, which is P-Voss. And that P-Voss data will be dumped into here, and we'll be able to see what their issues are with P-Voss in terms of growing kids. And it's very confusing, there's a misconception that whenever you have a kid, let's say, who's an honors kid or a very academic kid, who scores right up here, well, people say, well, you can't grow a kid who's already up here. Well, the truth of the matter is, you really can. You know, they look at that child, and they say, let's see, if he scored 1,500, well, he's projected, he should be able to score 1,525, okay? So, everybody can grow, and so there's different targets that each, every kid has, so if you don't meet those targets, then that hurts your P-Voss score, and it's reflected in your SPP.
Well, by the same token, some of the districts that have lower test scores have a bit of an advantage, because it's?
You could argue that, but again, every kid can grow at a certain growth rate, so the advanced kids and lower kids can grow, so maybe it's harder to grow a kid who has a learning disability. I mean, you can argue that, but they're saying that it balanced, the playing field is pretty well-balanced, it should be skewed towards the low end or the high end in terms of growth. Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis. And that's all I have in this.
Okay, this time, we normally would have recognition of visitors, and we have none. No one has signed up to speak, so let's continue with the meeting. May I have a motion to approve the Treasury's report and the High School Extracurricular Fund Report?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Leonard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of August?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Petrusi, second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Any old business?
None this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. We had an executive session prior to this tonight's meeting where we discussed the sale or purchase of real estate, teacher negotiations, hiring of personnel, and to receive other information. Let's move on. New business, athletics and extracurricular. Dr. Koschko's not here, so who do we have taking his place?
I got him.
Okay, Mr. Petrusi.
Mr. President. Moved to accept the following resignation is Tracy McDonald, Phyllis Moses, Sylvia Pozano, what a great name that is, Louise Rancivich.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to employ the following replacement for summer band camp. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation except for Act 34, 151, 114 waivers for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Jennifer Sager, clarinet instructor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to employ athletic and extracurricular personnel for 2014-15 school year as presented to the board. Salaries will be determined according to the negotiated agreement. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation except for Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the following volunteer coaches, Alex Navetny, volunteer boys assistant soccer coach, middle school, Sam Bassi, volunteer girls assistant soccer coach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Budget and findings. Mr. Kachasek's not here, so I believe Mr. Stovar?
Mr. Newell's got it.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Newell.
That's all right. Thank you, Madam President. Moved to approve the expenditures for the high school renovation project for the month of July 2014, according to the schedule as listed below.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to acknowledge receipt of PDE's approval of Plan Con Part F construction documents.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the renewal agreement with Sarkin Company. Reposed fees for their services will be $22,400 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014, $22,975 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015, and $23,750 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the Penn Trafford School District's contribution to the area libraries for 2014-15 as follows. Penn Area Library, 7,000. Trafford Community Public Library, 3,000. Manor Public Library, 2,000.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
No.
Okay. Do we do a roll call?
Yes, there will.
Roll call.
Yes. That's my vote, not my own.
Mr. Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Newell.
Yes.
Mr. Neenick.
No.
Mr. Petrusi.
Yes.
Mr. Stovar.
Yes.
Motion carries five, one, and three absent.
I do want to mention that this is not an increase of funding in this area, it's basically the same $12,000 that we have been donating to libraries, it's just a little bit of a redistribution to include Manor. Okay. Do I, I still do the question being called for? No. Okay.
Before I get to number five, I'd like, Mr. Lego, to spend a minute and kind of go over the bond, the bond issue.
Okay. And with us tonight again are Mr. Antonio Masidi from PNC Capital Markets and Mr. Chris Brewer from Dinsmore Scholes, and they'll correct me if I say anything wrong. Essentially, we're at the point in the project where we have two options in terms of how we can complete the borrowing. Now that the project cost is known, we can either borrow the remaining sum of money currently right now, or we can do as we've done in the last couple of years and borrow less than $10 million, which makes the bond bank-qualified and a little more attractive to the bond market, and then whatever the balance that we need, we can borrow after January 1st. I think the advantages of the bank-qualified probably outweigh the advantages of borrowing all the money right now, so that would be my recommendation.
And this motion, as I understand it, will cover either because it's a not-to-exceed number in total?
Correct. And I do have one question, though, for Mr. Brewer, because as I was away last week, I didn't see this resolution. The motion's saying the non-electoral debt not to exceed $13,750, but your resolution says $16,400,000.
Sure. If I might, Mr. Lego. The, based on the conversations last week with the board in the work session, the thought was that I'd call it, maybe get a chance to chat today. The thought was to go ahead and authorize the full amount that you might need on a not-to-exceed basis, if perchance, in spite of the best plans, the market changed up, and you might decide sort of at the last minute to go ahead and borrow more than a bank-qualified amount. So, it allows us to do that. The other thing it also allows us to do is, even if we stick to the plan that's being recommended, it may well be, if you're ready and soon enough, that we can take advantage of this one action, one resolution, we can bring both pieces in, one piece this year and one piece next year. So, we're trying to just be sort of efficient with your actions, and not to take anything out of your hands in terms of votes and decisions, but to just kind of keep this process as fluid and as quick on our feet as we can be. So, with that discussion last week, I'd asked Mr. Masidi to run the numbers at the $16,400,000. Again, for the record, we don't think you're going to be borrowing that number. Okay, so the purpose of the motion, I apologize, should be $16,400,000 as per the resolution?
Okay.
Yeah, and I, again, apologize, I did lay everybody's seats before you came in, the final version with the schedules from PNC to accomplish all that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Based on that information, I'd like to make the motion move to adopt the bond resolution authorizing the incurring of non-electoral debt not to exceed $16,400,000 in general obligation bonds.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the payment for the first year of on-hand schools in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have in this area, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Newell. Mr. Leonard, buildings and grounds safety.
Thank you, Madam President, I do have a couple items. I'd first like to make a move to approve the list of substitute custodians for the 2014-15 school year, a copy of which will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And also, I'd like to move to approve the replacement of four sets of bleachers at the Penn Middle School Gymnasium by C.M. Aikenlaw at a cost of $34,972.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Can I comment on that for a second? Just to clarify, those bleachers, our maintenance guys will be demoing the current bleachers, so they may be, we may not have bleachers in time for the fall season that's in there, so just make the public aware, we may have to have, you know, bring your lawn chairs and whatnot until the new bleachers are in. We wanted to make sure those bleachers were out, because we do feel that there's a safety concern with those, we don't want anybody else to get hurt, so the bleachers at Penn Middle School will not be there in the fall until the new ones are there, so they're going to start ripping those out very shortly, just to everybody.
What's the completion date on that, Foxworth?
They're thinking October, November.
That's usually 17 weeks just to get them there.
Yeah, I mean, there's lead time to getting them boarded and things like that. We hope to have them ready for the, you know, the winter basketball season, which is November.
This is BYOC for September and October. Bring your own chair.
We did that at the high school.
And actually, it worked out when we did it at the high school, I actually enjoyed sitting there.
You might bring, you may bring a more comfortable chair.
I did.
One more question on that matter. You said the demo has not started, it's to start soon, will the demo be complete by the time of school?
Jim Bracco has said he's going to try to get it done before school starts, but if he's not done, he will make them inoperable, he will board them up and make sure that nobody can pull them out.
By having our own guys do it, we save, we save a great deal of money as well.
At least one side, maybe.
Good, thank you. And having said all that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Neemack, Employee Relations, Negotiations, Transportation.
Thank you, Madam President. Moved to approve the list of bus drivers and substitutes as presented by First Student for the 2014-15 school year. A copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Chris, you have a comment?
No, I just went and jumped in after, this is approved, I had something to say about the bus rosters.
Okay, question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All opposed, no.
The bus postcard cards you should have received in the mail today or tomorrow, all the rosters are on the website. Please call with any concerns or questions.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. I think we're done.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec. Mr. Stovar, Food Service.
Yes, move to approve the list of cafeteria personnel for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year as presented by Aramark Education. A copy will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
All right, move to adopt the following resolution by the School Board of Directors for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year with regard to the free and reduced lunch program. Be it resolved that Penn Trafford School District agrees to participate in the National School Lunch Program and to receive commodities donated by USDA and accepts responsibility for providing free and reduced lunch meals in accordance with the Pennsylvania Department of Education Guidelines to eligible children in the schools under the district's jurisdiction.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrucci.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And finally, move to approve Turner Dairy as the milk supplier for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovar. Mr. Petrucci, Personnel and Curriculum.
Thank you, Madam President. Move the, move the administration to be designated official raiders for professional personnel at Penn Trafford Schools for two thousand fourteen school year as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the teacher assignments for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year as recommended by administration. A copy of assignments will be filed with official minutes. Administration is further authorized to notify teachers of their permanent assignments in accordance with negotiated agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the list of substitute teachers support personnel for two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. A copy will be filed with official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following intern assignments. From California University, cooperating teacher is Tracy Delumbo. Intern is Rebecca Kupler. The area is Speech, Language, Pathology. The dates are August twenty-fifth to December twenty-third, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to issue the professional contracts of the following teachers in accordance with the section eleven oh eight of the school laws of Pennsylvania. These teachers will satisfactorily complete three years of teaching in the Penn Trafford School District. Megan McGraw and Nicolette Stu. First off.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
I have to just interrupt for a second, Mr. Petrucci. I have to say, it was a fast three years because I can still remember their very first day of school for both Megan and Nicolette.
I did, actually.
And I just remember them getting their pictures done for the new teacher induction and I was laughing because we only had two at that point and you see how many you can hire. I know you got a whole mob coming out, but they both did an excellent job and I'm very happy with both of them. It was good hires and I think everyone was on the school board at the time to hire. Maybe Marty, just not three years, but.
Yeah, I remember him.
Yeah, but good hires, so thank you.
You take your time flying out, we can get our age.
Aye. And under step six, the special ed teacher, which is listed to be, to be determined, we actually had a last-minute resignation for the life skills classroom at level grade. The person we just hired, she resigned. We went through the whole entire process again with phone enrees, paper screening, Greg did an excellent job. And today, we had our teaching lesson and it was unanimous and we called for, all the references were great, but the name for special ed teacher is gonna be Brittany Gravsky. And it's, it's spelled just like grab, ski. G R A V S K I. She'll be a step, bachelor, step three, forty-four thousand one hundred, and she's able to start on day of her sixth school. So, that is my recommendation.
Okay.
That's bachelor, three?
Bachelor, three.
All right. I think you're still up.
Okay.
Number six.
I know that.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm done.
Okay.
I always have something.
All right, number six. Move to employ the following personnel. Employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary certification, according to Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, and one fourteen waivers for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Teachers' employment effective August eighteenth, two thousand fourteen. The teaching areas of his or her respective certification is signed by administration. Employees are contingent upon receipt of all signed contracts. First, Sabrina, Sabrina Bora, M two, salary forty-four thousand seventeen dollars. Christina Bazuto, M three, forty-five thousand seventeen dollars. Nicole Birch, B twenty-five, nine, fifty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Brett Keimer, B one, twenty-one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Nicholas Mastriani, M two, forty-four thousand seventeen dollars. Stephanie Miller, B twenty-five, three, forty-four thousand four hundred and four dollars. Jody Neat, B three, forty-four thousand one hundred dollars. Dorothy Sullivan, M three, forty-five thousand seventeen dollars. And Brittany Gravsky, B three, forty-four thousand one hundred dollars.
Want to keep on to this and then we'll be broke.
I think we do eight first.
Student Learning Assistance, effective eight eighteen, and salary twenty-eight thousand dollars. Dawn Brady, Cindy Berger, Heather Getkin, Kristy Hartman, Jennifer Capaco, Richard Nice, Deborah Reagan, Tara Raymond, Brittany Ring, Anna Marie Rodriguez, Bethany Smyda, Stephanie Trautman, Tracy Wolf. Special Education Classroom Instruction Aids, effective eight eighteen, salary twenty-eight thousand dollars. Rebecca Mitchell, Shannon O'Connor, Tammy Ross. Library Aids, Janet Johnson, Megan Leonard, Alexander Miller. Building Aids, Pam French, Sherry Gall. Paraprofessionals, Heather McElroy, Melinda Knoll, Megan Sansonetti. Long-term subs, Brittany Ring, Michael Mulchen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. I'd like to take a minute. Were you gonna do the same thing?
I always do.
I know that at least some of them are in the audience. If you all could just maybe let us know who you are, we're welcome. Stand up and.
Hi, Jody. Your first and foremost. Welcome. I'm Stephanie Miller, I'm first grade Sunrise.
I'm Kristy Hartman, I'll be S L A at Sunrise.
I'm Stephanie Trautman, S L A at Sunrise as well.
Nick Mastriani, first grade at Trafford.
Dorothy Sullivan, emotional. First grade Bazuto, second grade at McCullough.
Brett Keimer, Penn Middle School, ticket.
That it? Well, welcome aboard and congratulations.
Lot of work in various capacities. Dorothy, how long did you substitute for P C or work as a P C A before you got a job?
About eight years.
About eight years, Kristy?
Seven years.
Seven years, Nick?
Three years.
Three. Stephanie?
Three.
Three. And then Jody?
Five.
Five years. Couple newcomers. I know Brett is, he's doing our half-day tech ed and this is his very first teaching job, but he's very excited and we're glad to have him with us. And as far as, I know Stephanie just got married. I take it, no, I think it's, I was looking at the names and I don't know, it's a little bit different. And then Kristy, but in other, how long have you subbed for, Steph?
It's been five years.
Five years, and Kristy?
This has been my, this will be my third year in the district.
Third year in the district. So, it does, like I said, we have a lot of substitutes, but when we always do elementary, everyone says, how do we hire elementary? We hire from our subfools, we hire from our S L As. Excellent teachers, excellent people to have in our building. Very proud of all of you and I can't wait to see you in three years. Get it, get your permit certificate.
Yeah.